Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Troy, thank you very much for that, and welcome, everyone, to our Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to invite Pastor Jason Van De Veer for our invocation. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, we just come before you this afternoon, and Lord, we invite you into this place, Lord. We know that you inhabit every place, Lord, and where can we go from your presence, Lord? Where would we go? So we invite you here specifically into this time. We pray that you would just work for the benefit of all people. Lord, that you would work in these days in which we live to draw many, all those who will come to yourself. And, Lord, we thank you for the benefit of government. We pray for wisdom. We pray for direction. We pray for continued blessing. We pray for peace. And, Lord, we just pray that you would work, that you would work in our nation, that you would work in the world. We love you, Lord. We give you this time, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do, sir. County Attorney's Office reviewed all items on the agenda, and the Board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Great. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on the agenda today?
No, sir. Nope.
And I don't either. With that, I wanted to move up Commissioner comments to the top. We'll have a few Commissioner comments at the end, but just wanted to call for any Commissioner comments. You know, and I'm pleased to kick it off. I wanted to share with the 400,000 we represent, our esteemed friends and colleagues, and certainly all those that we are sworn to protect, that we've been having some very significant conversations around school security. And we are very thankful for the partnership and the work with our friends and colleagues across the street on Wilcox at the school district, and we've had some very productive conversations for many, many years. When I first ran for office, one of the pillars of my platform was school security, and then within a few months of being sworn in, the STEM shooting happened occurred. And I will never forget the day that we were rushed down to the AMC in Highlands Ranch and giving a press conference to the nation about something we could not explain. From that moment, the Board of County Commissioners contributed fairly significantly, about $13 million, towards the three pillars of school security, which, from an expert standpoint, we have often been told is mental health, school resource officers, and then that physical school security piece. So we have really advanced that ball over the last seven years. I'm incredibly pleased to report that this county has the highest number of school resource officers of any county in the entire state of Colorado. And we often talk about the good news we'll never hear about, the relationships that those first responders, those post-certified SROs, have with your kids, with my kids, with the children in our community, is so deeply significant. We have added to those SROs this concept around therapy dogs. And many might think, well, dogs, what does that have to do with school security? But citizens in Douglas County are really smart. It's not just about fluffy, cute animals, and they are fluffy, and they are cute. But the NASRO statistics lay out that kids are 10 times more likely to engage with an SRO officer if there is an animal involved. And so what it creates is this opportunity for more relationship and connection and awareness about what may be happening or not happening within any school. So really pleased about the success on SROs. Incredibly pleased about the success on mental health, in addition to all of the counselors that have been hired, the peer support programs, the mental health resources for kids, it's really significant. There's the co-responder teams, which is law enforcement paired with a clinician that can go out to any youth in crisis. We now have 988 and a number of really significant resources within schools and outside of the school environment for students that candidly, we represent whether they're in that building or not. Our charge as a county is the health, safety, and welfare of 400,000 people. And so we share that with the school district. When kids are in school, those kids that we are sworn to protect, they must protect as well. And I know they take it very seriously. We know that we can't speak specifically to physical school security in a public environment because we don't want to let the bad guys know how to defeat it. But I will say that that pillar of the stool is also deeply significant. And making sure that evil cannot enter those buildings and that those kids are protected is a top priority for me, for my colleagues, and I know for our colleagues across the street. So we were really having some pretty active conversations with the Board of Education, and then Evergreen happened, and Charlie Kirk happened, and a few other incidents that I know have kept you all up at night, kept us up awake, and a lot of our kids that have been paying attention on their own social media channels are deeply affected by what's occurred. So we just want you to know that we are standing in the gap with you to make sure that kids are protected in our schools and outside of our schools, and that conversation has become quite serious and will continue forward. I want to compliment our county attorney, who, since the day he got here, has been the most proactive, and as an attorney, I will say, the most proactive attorney I think I have ever met. And when we say, let's ramp up as a county and keep our kids safe, the response is yes. And how safe can we make them? So there is a pretty significant list of options and opportunities that the county can endeavor on, both as a county and then as a county in partnership with the school district, and we will leave no stone unturned to make sure the kids are safe. So just wanted to share that with you all. I know there's a lot of unrest right now out there, and want to make sure that you know we are thinking about that very deeply. Anything for the Board?
Hi, just Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate your heart, and I appreciate opening the meeting with that because what happened at Evergreen, the community is still grieving today. There's two kids still in the hospital. I know a GoFundMe page has been set up for one of the young kids who, for the rest of their lives, will be dealing with traumatic injury. And after the STEM school shooting here in Highlands Ranch, really as a legislator and a member of the House of Representatives at the time, it became my chief focus. It was my prime directive, so to speak, for my last several years in the House and in the Senate, and was able to learn a tremendous amount from really renowned experts on school safety and mental health and various other topics that relate around to the mental health and safety and well-being of our kids. We were able to do great things at the Capitol. In a sense, we revamped, the bills that I sponsored revamped, our school safety protocols from top to bottom. We started things like the Office of School Safety, started things, my bill to begin the I Matter program, dramatic upgrades to Safe to Tell, started the School Safety Grant Program and got, I know, $35 million fought for that for the very first year. And then from there on out, it was just a slugfest to try to get some dollars out of the General Assembly for school safety grants. And it really came from my heart, both as a dad and just a member of the community, that no kid should ever go to school afraid for their safety, and no parent should ever drop their kid off at school afraid if their kid would come home or not. And I carry that heart and passion today. There is still a tremendous amount of work to be done. We have accomplished a lot, both as a state and a district, and I think it's also important here to pause. While I was doing that stuff at the Capitol, the Commissioners here, led by Commissioner Layden and Teal, they weren't discussing legislation. They were actually doing stuff. And what they did was make Colorado or make Douglas County in our school district the leader, probably in the nation, in SROs in the schools. I'm getting to know those kids, and it's made such a tremendous impact. We'll never know the tremendous impact, but I know the three of us, we have each this year spent a full day with SROs in our schools, and their daily impact with kids is second to none. That would not have happened if not for the actions of you two, who were here doing the hard work and the boots on the ground, willing to pay for it, as well as partnering with the school district. And I think that brings us full circle to today, where it is my desire to work with the school district to see what else can we do. And I know those are ongoing conversations, and I don't know if anyone from the school districts here are listening, but we, as the Board of County Commissioners, are at the table and ready to work with you in any way possible. If it's a new technology, if it's a new tactic, if it's more SROs, whatever it is. And I know the school district, their budget is larger than ours, and it's a big behemoth of itself. They oversee a tremendous amount of kids every day in the schools. But anything we can do to partner with them, to really take us to the next level, to ensure that there's never STEM here, there's never an Evergreen in Douglas County again, the better. And I have my two kids in Douglas County schools, and it's a close priority for me, but I know it is for every parent and all members of our community. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for opening the meeting with those remarks. Those are heartfelt and genuine, and I look forward to more work. And I think the message to the public is that we, the Board of County Commissioners, are not sitting idly by on the topic of school safety.
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner. And genuinely, I know that you, as a dad and you, as a legislator, spent the better part of six years of your life invested in school security. And I know that firsthand because I testified in front of you at the State Senate, and you were running an interim school, you know, security committee during months when other legislators were doing other things. And so your hard work on those issues are a big deal, and I think the expertise you bring to this issue, it's significant. And from a faith standpoint, we often say for such a time as this, I don't think it's an accident that you have that background and that we all, that as a board, George and I share that goal with you. Commissioner, what would you add?
You know, I'm really glad this came up. I'm not happy about any of the circumstances, Commissioner, that you spoke of in our state, around our nation, that sort of always prompts this conversation again. And I'm always disappointed when we have these conversations in the wake of tragedy, and then they just always seem to trickle away. This hasn't been the first time any of us have had conversations like these. It is something that really should be more persistent, a conversation than episodic as we see it. You know, listen, I think the three of us are very interested in working with the school district in order to help them make decisions. You know, in the business world, you always say, you know, you can never get away from continuous improvement, you know, doing something better every day. You should never be satisfied and happy with what you have. We do know the school district has had entry security for years. I think there is a desire to see improvements made there as well. I think we can help with that. We can help from a regulatory point of view, and of course, we can always discuss the budget and helping because, after all, it is the people's money. And we know where the people stand on having their children be able to go to school in safety. You two have just spoken about it. I'm fortunate, my children are no longer of school age, but that might change soon where I have to be worried about my grandchildren, as we all will one day be worried about. You know, I think it's significant that we had a conversation not too long ago where the very school district that has the priority to have a vape detection system ridiculed a school that chose an entry security system. I hope I'm not the only one that is kind of infuriated that that situation exists. So I do think there's work we can do. There's things we can, from a regulatory point of view, from a budgetary point of view, that we can work with our colleagues in the school district to make sure that school security is never something that we settle for being good enough. But that is continually something that, like businesses that employ most of our residents, you're always improving, and you're always saying, what can we do better? What can we do now? What can we plan for in the future?
Well said, Commissioner. And part of our job is to never take our eye off the ball. And it's that capital P proactive where we have not stopped having those conversations. And we were having those conversations before these recent shootings occurred, and will continue to have them. It's like our role in wildfires. People on a day like today, when it's rainy and moist and nice out, you know, from a rain perspective, nobody's thinking about wildfires. The three of us are thinking about wildfires. And as we go into budget season, we're thinking about how we can make sure we have a, you know, best-in-state helicopter heli-tack program, that if something bad happens, we're not left holding the bag, and our citizens aren't left holding the bag. So that is our job. We take it very seriously, and I'm honored to serve with two colleagues that are proactive and really thinking about these things. So thank you both. With that, I wanted to begin with our ceremonies and proclamations, and we have a couple of really good ones. Our first, under Item 2, Ceremonies and Proclamations, is Item 2A, a Memorial Bench Program Recognition. And I believe we have Caroline Frizzell presenting for staff.
Thank you for this opportunity. It is my honor to just simply introduce a resident who called me maybe a month or so ago. She's one of the most passionate and grateful people I've probably met in my entire career in public service. And she called and said, how do I say thank you? How do I thank your staff for the tremendous work that they've done for her family? So I invite Carol up here, and also the folks she's here to thank today are from our Parks Department, Morgan Moorheart, Shane Falk, and Bobby Johnson. If you want to stand up here with me.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for giving us time. I think my daughter's going to join me. I'm Carol Hanson. Thank you for giving me and my oldest daughter, Ally Byrne, time on your agenda. We lost my son to suicide just before his 31st birthday. The anniversary will be this Thursday, September 25th. We've been in Parker for 36 years. I grew up going to the pinery in the 70s for Mother's Day brunch. I'm a Denver native girl, and we love Douglas County. I like to say, actually, that Andy, the dude, there's probably things that happened out there as a Ponderosa grad at Bingham Lake that none of us want to hear about, but they had a really good time. And so we were looking for a place, I was looking for a place where his friends and family, I have a girlfriend in the audience with me, where we could just go and spend time with them. And we play the pinery golf course, and reached out, found, actually, Megan at the Parks and Facilities. She answered the phone, and once I got Megan on the phone, was able to make my way to Morgan Moorheart and his team. And I have to tell you, Commissioners, there is a gorgeous bench now out at Bingham Lake that is actively enjoyed by children and grandparents, walkers. It's really just a beautiful spot. And Ally and I are here to say thank you. And I would, actually, what I do have one ask is that you publicize this program more, because I think you would have a lot of people. I'm pretty persistent, and now there's a bench, and I think that more people would enjoy it. And thank you to the Douglas County team. Just thank you guys.
All right. She stole a little of mine, just so you know. But so I'm Ally, and I am the big sister. And a year ago Thursday, we lost my little brother to suicide. We don't have a formal gravesite for him, and so this bench has become a place where his friends and family can feel close to him. It's obnoxiously perfect, is the best way to describe it, and I wish I didn't need a bench to feel close to my brother. I'm an educator, and so I also wanted to add to your statement earlier about school safety and give a true shout out to Douglas County schools. My girls are at Frontier Valley Elementary, and I am so grateful that they prioritize in their budget to early intervention services, because after losing her uncle, my 11-year-old struggled. The team, they have a dedicated school psychologist that's onsite five days a week, which is not a given in any school, and a full-time counselor, who are able to provide early interventions to our baby. They helped us find the I Matter program, which is one of the Colorado opportunities for kids to get access to free therapy. And that, like, we had a therapist the next day. It was an incredible program that I also think should be advertised more. I don't think that families understand what's available to them. I wish that no other family would experience what we're about to experience on Thursday as our first anniversary without him, but I know that they will. And I'm so grateful to have a place like this to go to. Thank you very much. It means a lot to us.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Well, please don't go too far. I love that. Well, I just have to say, you know, for us as a board, I think you heard a little bit about that, we are focused, laser-focused on every single family. You know, obviously, we zoom out to the macro, but your family matters to us. And I just have to say hats off to Morgan and the entire team, to Caroline and the group. Obviously, when somebody makes a decision like that, it impacts an entire community. It impacts families. It impacts anybody that touches and concerns that individual. And, you know, honestly, we didn't know Andrew, but he was deeply significant to you. And obviously, as you come up to the one-year anniversary, just know that we are thinking about you, praying for you, and just admire your courage and your spirit to stand up and carry it forward in a way that is positive and optimistic. And my goal, my hope, is that you and your family can celebrate his life together at this really special location. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you for your time.
Go visit the bench.
We would love to. Thank you. Morgan, would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say thank you to Carol and Ally. We don't see the people that this affects on a regular basis. So it's nice to see how much these matter to the public in general. And we do roughly six to 10 of these benches a year, but like I said, it's nice to see the impact that it has.
Well, thank you for that. So I do think we have some, Caroline, do you want to share what is next in the agenda here?
Yeah, I think the Board just was hoping to honor staff with a little certificate of recognition for their work today, and perhaps a challenge coin from Commissioner Teal.
Yeah, I have to recognize my colleagues because, you know, it was really Kevin and George that said, let's pause and honor the heroes among us and those that are truly making a difference for our citizens on a daily basis. So I know that it is our interest to provide an employee recognition to all three of you today. So how about a big round of applause for these guys one more time? So if you don't mind, we'll come down and maybe present you with a few items. What a great example of citizens turning tragedy into triumph and maybe encouraging other families to engage and memorialize their lost loved ones in the same way. With that, we're going to move on to our next item, which is Item 2B, a resolution proclaiming September as Workforce Development Month. And we have DJ Beckwith, Principal Planner, presenting for staff. Hey, DJ.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am DJ Beckwith, representing Planning Resources. Before you, is a resolution proclaiming this September as Workforce Development Month. This resolution honors and recognizes workforce development from operating centers like Arapahoe Douglas County Works. They have served Douglas County as our region's publicly funded workforce center with resources for job seekers and businesses alike. The National Association of Work Development Professionals has announced September as Workforce Development Month in an ongoing and annual tradition to bring attention to services provided to our community through these centers. This resolution joins them in recognizing their work in our county. We have with us today Emily and Sydney, who are representing Arapahoe Douglas County Works. Commissioners, I am prepared to read the resolution unless one of you would like to read it.
Please.
A resolution proclaiming Workforce Development Month during September 2025. Whereas the work of, the world of work continues to evolve rapidly in Douglas County's current and future workforce remains critical to our economy and prosperity. The dedicated workforce development professionals of Arapahoe Douglas County Works, in partnership with many organizations throughout the county, work tirelessly to deliver no-cost workforce solutions to support individuals on their path to employment and help businesses find the talent they need. And whereas, how and where we work is forever changing due to the advancements in technology, automation, artificial intelligence, and globalization. AD Works offers an array of tools to be successful in today's job market, including resources, workshops, one-on-one employment counseling, labor market navigation, and training assistance. And whereas, acknowledging that work landscape continues to evolve means our workforce development strategies must also evolve. AD Works has partnered with the Colorado Apprenticeship Hub to expand and support registered apprenticeship programs within the state, offering additional services to employers and job seekers. And whereas, AD Works has been the recipient of numerous awards, including the Mark Sanders Award of Exceptional Veteran Services, the Economic Development Council of Colorado's Partner of the Year, the Colorado Workforce Development Council's High Performing Board Recognition, the Arapahoe Douglas County Works Development Board, and the Douglas County EDC Large-Sized Business of the Year demonstrates the impact workforce development has had on the county's workforce. And whereas, the last two years have seen the highest use of Arapahoe Douglas County Works workforce center with access to in-demand and growing career paths for finding and recruiting skilled workers. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Douglas County Commissioners for the county of Douglas County, State of Colorado hereby proclaim that September 2024, or 25, shall be commemorated as Workforce Development Month, passed and adopted this 23rd day of September 2025 in Douglas County, Colorado.
Great. Thank you, DJ. We'd like to invite up our guests from AD Works. Welcome.
Hello, Emily Tapia, Workforce Administrator with Arapahoe Douglas Works, here with Sydney Goldich, our Agency and Workforce Board Manager. Commissioners, we thank you. Arapahoe Douglas Works appreciates this recognition of Workforce Development Month and the opportunity to share some of our outcomes and services provided to job seekers and businesses as the public workforce development system in Douglas County. In the last program year, Arapahoe Douglas Works provided over 8,000 workforce development services to more than 1,900 Douglas County residents. AD Works served almost 700 individuals in person at the Douglas County Career Center located on the ACC STRM campus, and provided job readiness workshops to nearly 900 customers. Arapahoe Douglas Works also delivered job readiness workshops specific to individuals with justice involvement to over 400 individuals in custody of the Douglas County Justice Center in the last year. 123 of those individuals further requested one-on-one meetings with a career advisor for more in-depth career coaching and to craft a resume they could take with them upon release to support faster connection to employment. Highlights of Arapahoe Douglas Works services provided to businesses include connecting 30 employers with 160 attendees at a job fair in collaboration 30 employers with 160 attendees at a job fair in collaboration with Arapahoe Community College and Douglas County School District. We also hosted 65 businesses, offering career information and internships at the Douglas County School District Career Expo at Legacy Campus with over 500 student attendees. Arapahoe-Douglas Works also provides employment support through human services partnerships and programming for SNAP and TANF recipients. Each of these programs had an average wage of placement exceeding $21 an hour for participants, supporting their employment goals towards self-sufficiency. Additionally, Arapahoe-Douglas Works supports partnerships to inform training and economic development initiatives, providing real-time job posting data and workforce data intelligence to Arapahoe Community College and the Douglas County School District to ensure they have labor market and data-informed career and technical education curriculum. And they also, we support that for the Douglas County EDC and Denver South and many other partners to support reporting, business attraction and retention initiatives, and to provide business education. Arapahoe-Douglas Works continually advances workforce development services and outcomes to foster economic vitality throughout the region. For every public dollar invested in Arapahoe-Douglas Works, the economic return is $7.97 in new worker earnings directly attributable to the value of Arapahoe-Douglas Works services and programs. We invite all businesses and job seekers to connect with us during Workforce Development Month and beyond so that we can continue these wonderful outcomes.
Wonderful. Anything additional?
No, I think that covers everything.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for being with us, and I'm honored to serve on your board. I know one thing we often say here is that the best form of welfare is a job. There's nothing that compares to what happens when an individual receives a paycheck and can achieve self-reliance through their own effort. And we like to provide that safety net for those that have fallen through the cracks, but that connection to job readiness and upskilling and retraining and just identifying that proper work opportunity is so deeply significant. I wanted to touch on another element that folks may not be aware of, but we have a really robust homeless initiative in Douglas County. And our thanks to Sasha Easton and both of you and your entire team for your engagement with our homeless initiative. Our heart team, which goes out and engages with folks that are potentially unhoused or in crisis, they rely upon AD Works to be able to provide those resources and connections to workforce readiness and jobs, and that's really significant for that community. So, thank you for that. Any addition? You bet. Any additional questions or comments from the board?
Just my sincere thanks, Mr. Chairman. I know you're on the board, so you interact regularly with it, but thanks to Arapahoe-Douglas Works for all you do. Too often in America, we've made work somehow the enemy, something that is bad. And we have a tremendous workforce here in Douglas County that has a tremendous work ethic, and they want to work. And they want to get to work, and you help them do that. So, it's a backbone of who we are as a country, hard work and work ethic, and you make it possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
Nothing.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for that. With that, I will open it up for any additional citizen comment. Any additional citizen comment on this item? Troy, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the resolution proclaiming September as Workforce Development Month.
Second.
So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Congrats, and thank you again. So, with that, we're going to move on to item 3, which is our consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, please, the board, I do have a motion to approve all requests in all items A through X of the consent agenda.
Second.
So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda for today, and we do have a couple of items. The first item is item 4A, which is a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation, Highland and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas regarding permanent water quality facilities associated the C-470 Toll Express Lanes Design Build Project Segment 1, Douglas County Project Number CI 2011-001. And we have the distinguished Art Griffith presenting for us today. Hey, Art.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I can't believe that we executed the original IGA in November of 2016. Seems so long ago. There, we established the municipal separate stormwater system MS4 requirements for the C-470 managed lane project. A big shout-out to Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District for their partnership, saved the project millions of dollars. CDOT had limited right-of-way to construct water quality improvements, and the Metro District stepped up and partnered with them and took on additional responsibility from water that drained from C-470 into their ponds along the C-470 corridor. There is a pond that's in loon tree, but we're here to focus on amendment to that agreement. The amendment was always envisioned because CDOT utilized a design-build procurement method, so they didn't have final plans when we entered into the agreement. So, we always anticipated this amendment, once it was completed, to identify the final deeds that both CDOT and the Metro District are part of. We're not part of those. We are involved because the Highlands Ranch Metro District's MS4 permit also falls under Douglas County requirements. So, both CDOT and Douglas, and the Metro District have to follow our standards. So, we have overview. We really don't have any maintenance responsibilities. We do get involved in notification for emergencies that may come up with spills in CDOT right-of-way that are CDOT's responsibilities. So, this memorializes the anticipated amendments, really identifying the water quality pond plans and what maintenance and infrastructure from CDOT falls into those plans, which are CDOT's responsibility, and the rest are the Metro District's responsibilities. So, any questions?
Great. Thank you for that. Thank you for that presentation, Art. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. That was a great set of details and information for us, Art. I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. No online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So, with no citizen comment, I'm going to close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my sincere thanks to Mr. Art Griffin. Thank you so much, Griffith, sorry, for all of your hard work, apparently even going back to 2016 when this was originated. I know our water districts in all of Douglas County, all water districts across the state are trying to get off the groundwater, the basin below, and focus on surface water, and I imagine this will help greatly in that project. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation, Highlands Ranch Metro District, and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, regarding permanent water quality facilities associated along the C-470 Toll Express Lanes Design Build Project Segment 1, Douglas County Project Number CI 2011-011.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Art.
With that, we'll move on to our next item in our regular agenda, which is item 4B, a request to approve and sign the secondary manufacturers' participation forms. We have Maureen Waller, Project Coordinator, presenting for staff. Hi, Maureen.
Hi, good afternoon. This item is a request to have the board sign off on another opioid settlement. This is with eight additional manufacturers of opioids. That's not counting the Purdue that the board signed off on last month. And they're collectively calling this one the secondary manufacturers. So, it's to, in order, of course, for Colorado to maximize its profits, it needs all, not profits, maximize the amount of money that it brings in, it needs all the local governments as many as possible to sign off on these agreements. And again, once again, this one will be distributed according to the framework that's laid out in the statewide MOU that the county joined in August of 2021. This one is a smaller settlement. It's $12 million for the eight manufacturers, and it will be distributed in the same manner, 60% directly to the regions, 20% to the local governments, 10% to the infrastructure program, and 10% to the state. So, in total, it's about 265,000 will come directly to the region, and I think it's about 88,000 to the local governments, most of which are directing the monies to our region. So, we're looking at about $350,000 additionally. So, the request today is to have the board sign off on these participation forms and join the settlement.
Wonderful. Thank you, Maureen. And, you know, it's so wonderful to be our own district, our own, you know, opioid council in District 12, Region 12, in Douglas County. That fund just continues to grow. I think we were told it was 18 million over 15 years or so, and now it's north of 25 and growing. So, thank you so much for your role and your leadership and coordination with all of our really important partners. This has become a significant group for us. So, thank you.
We really guess. Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, not seeing any questions. I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item? Okay, not seeing any citizen comment in the room. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So, with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Please, the board, I do have a motion to approve or request to approve and sign the secondary manufacturers' participation forms.
Second.
So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Maureen. Our final item on our regular agenda is item 4C, a resolution endorsing the county's inclusion into the Dr. Cog Economic Development District. Once again, DJ Beckwith with staff. Hey, DJ.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. DJ Beckwith again with Planning Resources. Before you is a resolution endorsing the county's inclusion into Denver Regional Council of Government or Dr. Cog's Economic Development District. Dr. Cog is pursuing designation by the Economic Development Administration as an Economic Development District. The designation of an Economic Development District would make Dr. Cog eligible for grant funding from the Economic Development Administration to support technical assistance for local jurisdictions and outreach and engagement by Dr. Cog's staff to support economic development and implementation of the regional comprehensive economic development strategy. The Economic Development Administration requests each county proposed to be included in the Economic Development District provide a resolution passed by the Board of County Commissioners indicating support for the inclusion of the Economic Development District. Dr. Cog has requested that the board approve a resolution endorsing inclusion into the Dr. Cog Economic Development District. Commissioners, I am prepared to read the resolution unless one of you would like to read it.
Would anybody on the board like to read the resolution? DJ, go ahead.
All right. A resolution endorsing the county's inclusion into the Dr. Cog Economic Development District. Whereas Douglas County is an active member of the Denver Regional Council of Governments and its Economic Development District Advisory Committee, and whereas Douglas County understands the importance and benefits of having Economic Development District for the entirety, for the entire region, and whereas Douglas County understands the difference in purpose and function between the EDD and our local economic development corporation and believes that having Dr. Cog designated as an Economic Development District will augment and enhance our own local efforts along with those of the Metro Denver EDC, and whereas Douglas County believes that having Dr. Cog designated as an Economic Development District will present expanded technical assistance and support for our smaller, more remote communities. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners for the County of Douglas, State of Colorado lends its support and endorsement of being included in the Dr. Cog Economic Development District as designated by the Economic Development Administration, U.S. Department of Commerce, passed and adopted this 23rd day of September 2025 in Douglas County, Colorado.
Great. Thank you, DJ. Any questions for staff? You know, I think people who are listening and aren't familiar with Dr. Cog might be asking who this doctor is that has all this money and is having all these conversations. That was the late Roger Partridge, his joke. He always said. But the Denver Regional Council of Governments, which frankly, Commissioner George Teal has led on and served on for many, many years, and we appreciate your service on that board. I don't have any questions. I think it's very straightforward and makes sense, but if the board doesn't have any comments or questions, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment? Okay, seeing none in the room, any citizen comment online?
I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So, with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and these are grants that will go to help our economy, hopefully, definitely, and hopefully, here in Douglas County. It's a federal office, the U.S. Economic Development Administration. They've got five around the country, one of which is here in Denver, and so it's altogether fitting that we would participate and frankly, get our fair share of taxpayer dollars that we have paid into our federal government. So, with that, I move to approve a resolution endorsing the county's inclusion to the Dr. Cog Economic Development District.
You know, I was fortunate to play a leadership role on the steering committee at the Denver Regional Council of Governments, specifically to explore joining an EDD, forming an EDD, an Economic Development District for the Denver region, and getting that passed through with the, essentially, U.S. Chamber of Commerce in order to really, yeah, open up. You know, we're used to grant funding for our transportation projects and as we just dealt with, with the prior agenda item for health and safety within our community. But we just haven't been participating in this nationwide effort to, by the federal government, to encourage economic development. And so, no, I'm really glad we were able to get that over the finish line. We were able to be, submit an application that was accepted by the feds, and so I think this is great, guys. This is going to help the county, just the same way transportation dollars come in through Dr. Cog, so too our economic development activities can be enhanced with the help of our federal partners. So, I'm happy to second.
That's great, and congrats on that leadership arc of getting it to the finish line here today. That's great. So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. So, we are right at 2:30, and we do have a very packed land use meeting today with a number of items, but I do want to have a brief moment for any citizen comments in addition to the opportunity to comment on our agenda items that you had today. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared already on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you would state your name and where you reside prior to making comments, you will have up to three minutes. Of course, any disruptive behavior such as impeding officials, refusing to leave when asked, or attempting to disrupt the meeting may result in criminal charges. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Any citizen comment in the room? Okay, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment today.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So, with that, I'll close citizen comments and then bring it back to my distinguished board for any additional Commissioner comments.
None for me.
Okay.
No, sir.
Okay, and I don't have any additional comments either. Any other business that the board would like to take on today?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My apologies. No other business, but we did have our 30th celebration of Douglas County Open Space just yesterday at a fall festival at Sandstone Ranch. It was wonderful, it was cool. It was the first time we, as a county, have ever done a fall festival ourselves, and it's just something I think the three of us, I think we really could build on in the years ahead, as we're also building on the open space plans we have around the county, purchasing, securing that open space for future generations, and making it some passable trails for people, too, and even places icons. So, it's an exciting time in open space. We just had the celebration yesterday meant to bring it up, and thanks to all the citizens who came in and saw us.
You know, Commissioner, I am really glad you brought that up, and I think it might be other business. be other business. I was honored to attend with you, and we, so many families and parents and citizens came up to us and just said they had a great time, and the face painting and the pumpkins and the food trucks and the music. I mean, it all just kind of clicked. We were expecting a couple hundred, and it was just, was it thousands? It was just unpacked out there. Couldn't believe how many folks. I don't know how many exactly, but it seemed like a lot of people. So I know that you had mentioned this notion of perhaps revisiting of a fall festival, fall festival on an annual basis. So instead of just a anniversary celebration, maybe having an annual fall festival. And Commissioner, with the benefit of you being here, I think we wanted to, of course, and absolutely, include you in that thought process. I know for many years you have really been an advocate for family-friendly events that engage our public, but what do you think about doing an annual fall festival?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. We, we see local businesses, local residents doing it all the time. We permit some of them through this office anyhow. So absolutely, let's, yeah, let's, let's give that some thought, and let's, let's move forward with a plan.
Well, that sounds great, Commissioner. I mean, since this was your leadership initiative, Kevin, would you like to make a motion?
So move. Let us begin plans for next fall.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor to, I believe, direct staff to explore a annual fall festival. Is there any further discussion?
I think my, my two little kids at home will be happy, and I think lots of people are in the county. Well.
I think so, too. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously. I think that's great work, gentlemen. So with that, we'll turn to our county manager. Anything from the county manager? Okay, and as always, the amazing county manager report is in the packet for any interested citizen. A lot of good information there. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 14, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. We're going to reset for about five minutes before we get into our land use and public hearing. We are adjourned.